Good morning. We're going to get started now. The council members will take their seats and any visitors or guests retired behind the rail. Thank you. To give our invocation this morning, Chair recognizes Reverend Lawrence Tom... ...of the Chinese Christian Church and Center. He is here today as a guest of Councilwoman Gimm. I would ask all members, guests, and visitors to please rise. Morning.
I know you have a full agenda ahead, so I'll keep it short. Would you knit your hearts together with mine? Lord, you've placed us here at this time and place for reasons greater than we can fathom. In this time, where we've seen power abused and character crumble, enable us here to lead and make wise decisions for the flourishing of every person in this city. There is so much to be done. You've told us to simply ask you for wisdom and you would surely give it generously, and so we ask. May we see with new eyes and new hearts, may we see people, all people, especially the least among us, the invisible, and be filled with compassion and conviction and courage to lift them up. May we see theirs as well as our own circumstances differently with hope-filled eyes. Being quick to listen and slow to speak, may we honor one another and change the way things have been done. Release us from judgment and fear. Help us to make the most of every opportunity, for time is a gift. And so we come before you with humility and gratitude and expectation that there are greater things to come. For when we call out to you, you answer. We ask all these things in the name of Christ who loved us and gave his life for us in order that we may truly live today and forever. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate those inspiring words. Council, oblige. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. It is my intention to come back, but I am going to, at 11 o'clock, have a press conference with the district attorney, some good news for Kezington, so I ask that I be recorded as voting aye for all bills and resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The record shall reflect that. Chair recognizes Councilman Kenyatta Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to be excused today by voting aye on all bills and resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. The record shall reflect that. Thank you. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 27, 2018, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 27, 2018, be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved in probably second at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 27, 2018. Stand and approve. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that Journal is approved. And the next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests of leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. Of half the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. This time, I would like to dispense with our regular order of business, and I would like to thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down to witness their government in action. We genuinely appreciate you being here. We hope that your stay here today is a knowledgeable one, but more importantly, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. So again, thank you so much for being here. This time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee, who will present a resolution declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. With Jean Lettiskey and those accompanying her, please join the Councilmen at the podium. And joining Councilman Greenlee, we have Councilman Jones, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Parker, and... Councilman Green.
Uh, yes. Yeah, it was Jones.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Every year, we recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, but obviously, this year, here in City Council, it has really hit home as a member of our council family was a victim of the scourge of domestic violence. But we also certainly want to also recognize those who are here today who daily look after the needs of the victims of domestic violence. So with that, this is a resolution declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is being sponsored locally by Women Against Abuse, and through their sponsorship, they are encouraging everyone to help to increase the awareness of domestic violence in our homes and communities and decrease its negative effect on Philadelphia. And...
Whereas each year, the Philadelphia Police Department responds to more than 100,000 domestic-related calls and domestic violence is not just a local problem, but a national issue where every minute, 24 people are victims of physical violence, rape, or stalking by an intimate partner in the United States. More than 12 million people over the course of the year are resulting in the loss of life and more than three individuals each and every day.
Whereas fact, one in three teens in the United States is a victim of physical, sexual, emotional, or verbal abuse from a dating partner. Or Women Against Abuse, so Women Against Abuse has developed a teen dating violence prevention program called Safer, Safety Awareness for Every Relationship, in order to address the prevalence of teen dating violence in all communities and support local schools who are leading the way in preparing their students to pursue healthy relationships. And whereas Women Against Abuse in partnership with Congreso de Latinos Unidos, Lutheran Settlements House Bilingual Domestic Violence Program, and Women in Transition, the Philadelphia Domestic Violence Collaborative provides a comprehensive continuum of services to survivors of domestic violence and their families right here in Philadelphia, which includes safe housing, legal aid, counseling, medical advocacy, and behavioral health services.
Whereas the Philadelphia Domestic Violence Collaborative provides education and training to the community about domestic violence issues and resources, and has partnered with the City of Philadelphia to operate the Philadelphia Domestic Violence Hotline. And in fiscal year 2018, more than 11,700 calls were answered through the hotline. And whereas to ensure a more holistic approach to addressing violence in our community, Women Against Abuse and sister agencies are partnering with the city's administration's Office of Domestic Violence Strategies and over 70 different community stakeholders to implement shared safety. Philadelphia's response to relational violence, a citywide plan to respond to domestic violence in Philadelphia.
Whereas to support a coordinated community response to domestic violence, the Philadelphia Domestic Violence Collaborative organizations will hold events throughout the month of October to promote awareness about domestic violence and to build community support so that all Philadelphians will take a stand against domestic violence. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia declares and recognizes October Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Further resolved and an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to representatives of Women Against Abuse as a sincere expression of City Council's gratitude, appreciation, and commendation for raising the public's awareness regarding domestic violence. And this resolution is certainly cosponsored by all members of City Council. Janine and everyone, thank you for all you do every year. Thank you.[726.56][726.56](applause)
Let the Chair recognize Ms. Lettiskey.
Thank you so much, council members Greenlee, Jones, Green, Johnson, and Reynolds Brown for cosponsoring, and all City Council for all of the support that you've provided over many years in order to help overcome domestic violence in our city. We're honored to be here again this year with our partners to proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. While this month marks another year of progress in Philadelphia's ever-improving response, it's also a time to prepare for the work ahead and to ask ourselves what we need to do differently in light of the significant consequences that relationship violence continues to have on our city. Just weeks ago, we felt the loss of precious life twice. Kayden Mancuso, a beautiful seven-year-old child beaten to death by her abusive father, and your own Director of Human Resources, Linda Rios, murdered by her estranged husband. These tragedies break our hearts and they tear at our community. They illuminate the need for action and change now. And in 2017, Philadelphia lost 22 lives to domestic violence. These murders represented a 22% increase from the year prior, and alarmingly, this trend is continuing with Linda's loss marking the 21st person killed at the hands of an abuser this year. That's 21 missing family members, colleagues, friends, neighbors, and loved ones. As a city, we must consider the ways in which violent, coercive, and controlling behaviors that for centuries has been happening behind closed doors is affecting our communities. We must commit to stronger prevention work to abate this violence before it starts. There are no simple answers to ending domestic violence, but we must work collectively and comprehensively across law enforcement and all health and human service entities in legislative efforts and funding support for adequate safety services by keeping guns out of the hands of abusers through prevention efforts and by involving the entire community. I challenge City Council, which has long been an advocate in this work, to take the next step in addressing this epidemic, to commit to deep prevention work in our highest-risk schools. Right now, we're only covering about 10. That's a very small percentage. And an awareness campaign targeted to the city's workforce. While today is significant in officially marking Domestic Violence Awareness Month in our city, more importantly will be what we each choose to do to overcome domestic violence in our community each and every day. As a community, we must do better, and we must actively declare that violence, whether on our street corners or in our homes, is wholly unacceptable. I thank you for your commitment to being part of this life-saving struggle, and I know that together we can and we will create a safer and healthier Philadelphia for all. Thank you so much.[975.63][975.63](applause)
Council, oblige. Thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan, who presented a resolution recognizing Manufacturing Month and the Weber Display and Packaging. With Mr. Dougherty and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman Heenan, we have Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Taubinberger, Councilman Green, Councilwoman Parker.
And we get the opportunity sometimes to, well, most times, to acknowledge and congratulate people and industries and organizations for their incredible, incredible achievements and longevity here in the city of Philadelphia. And sometimes we do it, you know, in a month, right? So manufacturing has been one of the staple, small-business, local employers of the city of Philadelphia since its inception. We were once called the workshop of the world, and we still remain the workshop of the world because we're awesome and hopefully, you know, we're able to attract Amazon and other sorts of businesses in the city because we have adjusted along the way, and we've adjusted in our pipeline, trying to educate our kids and our adults in new technology. So manufacturing isn't the old smokestack, smoke-filled rooms, just like my father worked for three of them. Unfortunately, they have closed, right? But some have chosen to stay and committed to the city of Philadelphia and making it work and employing our residents. You know, if you take a look at some of the neighborhoods that we have around the city of Philadelphia, all right, they've created the progressive design of eat, work, and play, all right? And that includes row homes, where you can go to work, you can sleep, you can worship, you can go to your local library and to your local playgrounds. And we have recognized that for a long time now, and today, we recognize October 2018 as Manufacturer Month and further honoring Weber Display, which I'll talk to you in a second about, Weber Display and Packaging for their more than 120 years of dedication to the manufacturing industry in the city of Philadelphia, all right? When Weber had the opportunity, all right, to be incentivized $3 million to go three miles, he says, "I'm not moving three feet." All right? I'm going to hire three more people." And that's what he has done. He is currently employs 170 people in our neighborhood, and he chooses by choice, all right? Because it's a passion of his, it's a family legacy to hire and pay 5% to 10% higher than the nearest competitor. So he is expanding his business as we speak. We are working together with the city, and they have a decent retirement. He has respectful and good health care, so when somebody has the opportunity to put their years in, they can retire with dignity. And I think that's what we're all about here. So we are honoring Weber Display, and I want to thank him for all he has done. In 2012, I don't know if you remember, we created a task force, a task force of the manufacturing industry, all right, that hires over 25,000 people here in the city of Philadelphia. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Green for the beginning of our
Whereas careers in manufacturing are characterized by above-average wages and rewarding work with a well-defined career path. There are over 20,000 manufacturing jobs in the city of Philadelphia, yet area manufacturing companies regularly have difficulty filling open positions. And whereas, thanks to the ongoing work of the mayor's Manufacturing Task Force, manufacturers, government, and nonprofits have started to address the skilled labor shortage they face through outreach, education, and program development.
Whereas Philadelphia's manufacturing companies add to the vitality, prosperity of our community by providing above-average wages and creating family sustainability. Manufacturing makes a significant contribution to the local, state, and national economy. Whereas Philadelphia and the region helps to support an estimated 17.2 million jobs in the United States, about 1 in 6 private sector jobs. Nearly 12 million Americans, or 9% of the workforce, are employed directly in manufacturing.
Whereas since 2012, the first Friday in October has been recognized as National Manufacturing Day and has been previously recognized by this body. To celebrate Manufacturing Day, groups locally, regionally, and nationally will sponsor projects and programs designed to create great awareness and consciousness of the manufacturing sector. And whereas this year, the city, led by the Office of Industry and Manufacturing with external partners including the School District of Philadelphia, Delaware Valley Industrial Resource Center, Philadelphia Works, Weber Display and Packaging, Next Fab, Rhodes Industries, First Quality Retail Services, has expanded the celebration to span the month of October.
Whereas there will be events around the city, including tours of local manufacturing facilities for Philadelphia School District students, a manufacturing summit focusing on leadership, talent, and culture and technology, a 3D printing innovation challenge that will engage students in using 3D printing technology to create a Philadelphia attraction presentation. And whereas Manufacturing Month aims to communicate the opportunities in the sector and spotlight the range of products made in the city of Philadelphia for fields including aerospace, food and beverage, health care, packaging, and technology. Whereas Weber Display and Packaging began operations over 120 years ago at a facility at Fifth and Locust Street. David Weber developed multiple patents in corrugated packaging and was an innovator in the industry. Whereas in 1992, Weber Display and Packaging was named Philadelphia's Manufacturer of the Year. Currently located in Port Richmond, the company continues to expand and thrive and reported its highest sales to date in 2015.
Whereas Weber Display and Packaging is now the second and third-generation anchored company thriving on its roots and its familiar ties and seeing tremendous growth since 1991. The company employed 80 dedicated people and has since expanded its operations to 170 workers at the oldest corrugated house in the United States. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Philadelphia, we hereby recognize the month of October 2018 as Manufacturer Month. Reside further, but, you know, with personal privilege, when we created the Office of Manufacturing in the city of Philadelphia, all right, this council has sought to include workers in all of its zoning notifications. When we went through our zoning reform, any industrial, light industrial, or ICMX, the zoning board is now notified because of the importance and the recognition that each and every council member sees, all right? So notification has been a part of that. You know, I also have been saying for years, all right, we talk about jobs. We just went through a rough year debating how we include all workers in the city of Philadelphia. The manufacturing industry, I've been saying since day one, is looking for over 1,000, 1,000 Philadelphia employees as we speak. So I will pass out at the end of council, a career, career, not job expo, a career expo on manufacturing opportunities that will directly employ over 1,000 people. So we're going to have over 50 employees, employers, all right, that are looking for help right now, all right? Not next week, they're looking for help right now, over 1,000. And that's what manufacturing, its talent started here, and that's why we remain the workshop of the world in the city of Philadelphia. So with that, the engrossed copy of this resolution will be presented to the representatives of Weber Display, Jim Dougherty and his packaging company, the city of Philadelphia, further evidencing, all right, the sincere respect and admiration of this entire legislative body. So I want to thank you all and congratulations to Weber Display.[1798.82][1798.82](applause) So I want to thank you all, and congratulations to Weber Display.[599.04][599.04](APPLAUSE).
And the chair recognizes Mr. Dougherty for remarks.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank Councilman Bob Eden for his support through the years for our company. He's been a great advocate for Weber Display and Packaging. Our company was founded in 1893 at Fifth and Race. We moved down to Richmond and Tioga Street, Port Richmond section, in 1925. We've been 94 years at that location. Like Mr. Eden said, we're looking to grow, we've grown our business. We're very proud to be Philadelphians, while not as tasty as a tasty cake, or a amarosa roll, or a Deacon Watson hoagie, and by the way, all three of those are our customers. We're very proud of what we do down at Richmond and Tioga Street. Again, we're a family-run business, and I'd just like to thank council, and we live in the greatest city in the world. I don't care what they say up in New York. Thank you.
Councilor Beattie. Thank you, and congratulations. Thank you. Our next order of business is communications, and the chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on October 3, 2018, I signed the following bill, which was passed by council at a session on September 20, 2018, Bill Number 180077A. And I am submitting herewith to the consideration of your honorable body, an ordinance submitting title for the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Building Construction and Occupancy Code, Subcode R, entitled the Philadelphia Residential Code, by adding amendments to the 2015 edition of the International Residential Code, as adopted by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Subcode EC, entitled the Philadelphia Energy Conservation Code, by adding amendments as adopted by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and Subcode P, entitled the Philadelphia Plumbing Code, to allow for technical amendments to be made by regulations, all to conform with the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code Act, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you. Those messages will be printed in today's journal. Our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer up one bill, and I wish to speak very briefly now on the bill.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance submitting Chapter 17, 1500, of the Philadelphia Code entitled Annual Disparity Study and Participation Goals, by providing for further detail relating to, among other things, North American Industry Classification System codes.
Refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Very briefly, Mr. President, we all know that we're celebrating 34 years of Minority Enterprise Development Week. Fittingly, this year's theme is elevating equity. Kudos to Councilman Curtis Jones for being recognized as one of the champions of Med Week. Our continued challenge is greater accountability when it comes to elevating all types of minority-owned businesses. We all know that we live in a majority-minority city and a majority city of women. As of 2003, before the implementation of the disparity study, 7.8% of all city contracts were issued to MWBE firms. I repeat, 7.8%. That means that 92.2% of all city contracts were issued at firm, to firms that are not minority-women owned or disabled. According to Iola Harper, our Deputy Commerce Director, 31 cents out of every dollar spent by the city in for-profit contracting opportunities are spent with a person of color, a woman, or a person with a disability. Is this progress? Yes, but we must do more. Why? If we, as a city, are serious about reducing economic marginalization and expanding our tax base, then the advancement of minority- and women-owned contractor development for the next generation, it makes good business and is an imperative. We cannot say that we're making progress if all of the contracting with MWDBEs is evident only at the lower rungs. The disparity study legislation spearheaded by Stephen Chentaman and led by always counsel from former Councilman Good that we're introducing today will allow OEO to report now the classification of businesses in greater detail. This is not a new practice, we're only now looking at adopting the federal standard that is also used in the United States Census. I would certainly have more to say about this new goal for a more comprehensive disparity study once we have public hearings. The end goal is more precise transparency in the reporting of MWDBEs in both prime and subcontracting opportunities. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I introduce one bill, one privileged resolution, and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
An ordinance establishing a one regulation on Aspen Street from North Marco Street to North 46th Street eastbound.
Refer to committee.
And a resolution hereby recognizing October 9 as Charles W. Bowser Day in Philadelphia in recognition of his lifelong dedication to public service and his significant contributions to the African-American community in Philadelphia.
Today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city-owned lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situate in the 3rd ward of the city of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, on your behalf, I offer one resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the new Kensington-Fishtown urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street address as 128 Melville Street.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I offer one resolution, privileged.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing Sunday, October 14, 2018, as General Kazimir Pulaski Day in the city of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Good morning, Mr. President. One bill, two resolutions on my behalf. And I'd like to also offer three bills and two resolutions on behalf of Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Section 9205 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Sales by prohibiting vending on both sides of 77th Street between City Avenue and Overbrook Avenue.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance amending Chapter 122700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Permit Parking Districts by amending the boundaries of Permit Parking District 2 and Permit Parking District 31.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance amending Chapter 123000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Use of an Automated Red Light Enforcement System to Prevent Red Light Violations by authorizing the installation of red light enforcement systems at the intersection of 70th Street and Lindbergh Boulevard.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Mall Street and Ellsworth Street, State Almond Street and 23rd Street, Kimball Street and 20th Street, Cater Street and 21st Street, Dickinson Street and 15th Street, Carpenter Street to 20th Street, 8th Street, and Oregon Avenue.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the 15th anniversary of Word Radio and celebrating the station's role as the voice of the African-American community.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold hearings regarding diversity and inclusion in procurement and capital expenditures by the Philadelphia School District.
Today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city-owned lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situate in the 52nd ward of the city of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city-owned lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situate in the 38th ward of the city of Philadelphia.
And that will also be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilman Maria Kianna Sanchez, offer one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city-owned lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situate in the 18th ward of the city of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and honoring Tracy's Beautiful Inside and Out, a nonprofit breast cancer support organization whose mission is to help survivors maintain a level of normalcy.
And that will be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Morning, Council President. I have one bill and one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Section 212302 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Form of Fiscal Impact Statements by amending Exhibit A to Add Job Growth or Loss Information.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Richard vague, recipient of the 2018 Icon Award presented by the Germination Project for his hard work and dedication to the city of Philadelphia.
And that will be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Goode.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Toppin-Rogers.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. Offer one resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Boeing and Leonardo helicopters on the announcement of the winning selection of their bid to replace the United States Air Force Fleet of UH-1N Huey helicopters to be proudly made in Philadelphia.
And that will be this week's calendar.
Councilman Bobby Heenan is a co-sponsor of that.
Okay, thank you. Record shall reflect that, and chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. Offer two bills on behalf of Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance revising parking restrictions on East Willow Grove Avenue, both sides between Crittenon Street and Stettin Avenue.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Allen's Lane, Bryant Street, Mount Pleasant Avenue, Mower Street, Cedwick Street extended, Lincoln Drive, Ellet Street, and McCallum Street.
Refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I offer one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Streets and Services to hold hearings to ascertain whether current and planned road repair efforts will address unsatisfactory road conditions.
And that will be on this week's calendar. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. We have no reports from committee today. So our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. There are no bills on the first reading calendar, so the chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendar today. Numbers 170247, 180848, 180851, 180295AAA, 180498AAA, 176, I'm sorry, 170678AAA, 180504, 180739, 180740, and 180744. All other resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you. Councilman, the first bill?
Also being called up, 170247. Is that called, is that?
247, I think it's, it's a hold.
Okay, that's a hold. Okay. That's a hold, I'm sorry. That's a hold.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Before considering the bills and resolutions that is on the final passage calendar today, we will have our public comment session. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passage calendar today, if you have not already done so, you may sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you go to the middle of the council chambers, there is a podium with a device on it. When the light turns green on that device, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks, and when the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines to conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to testify on a bill or resolution that is on the final passage calendar today. And with that, Mr. Decker, can you please call the first name on the list?
Joe Dennehall, commenting on 180851, 170678AAA, 180744, and 180351A.
Morning.
Morning. This is official decree of the people, remandamis quo warranto, as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council, mayor, and others transfer private property to government, probably illegally. Last week, the lack of affordable housing was again on the agenda. Our governor, senator, mayor, council, and others spending low-income housing money to build a mall on my stolen home. Obviously, housing low-income constituents is not a priority. At what point does a public servant become an oath violating elective monarch? Ignoring your constituents is not allowed. Stealing my home is a jailable offense. Your constituents are tired of your refusal to represent them. If committing one crime one time would damn people in jail, why do my numerous complaints to the Attorney General and the district attorney go unprosecuted? Is the Attorney General part of this Rico-style conspiracy to deny rights? The constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of clothes, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. 42 U.S.C. 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 1987, 18 U.S.C. 241, 242, 2381, 2384, PA Constitution, Article 1, Sections 1 through 28, 26, PACSA 703, 705, 708, 709, 712, 713, 716, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 141330, 144056 appear violated. I call for the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and the legal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue, to denial of God-given 42 U.S.C. 1982 property rights for 24 years is egregious, extraordinary oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color of law government must have its charter government revoked until a constitutionally complying government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require oath, law, and constitution be enforced, and jail is required for all who violate their oath, constitution, or law. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow monument corruption.
Thank you for your testimony.
Garrett O'Dwyer, commenting on 180739, 180740, and 180744.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Garrett O'Dwyer, and I am the Health Programs and Special Projects Manager of the Philadelphia Association of Community Development Corporations. On behalf of PACDC, we're excited to see progress on Bill Number 170678, and look forward to working with council and the administration to make this program a success. I'm also here today to testify not just on PACDC's behalf, but also on behalf of nine other organizations: Association Puerto de Canos and Marcha, ASE, Habitat for Humanity Philadelphia, LISC Philadelphia, Mount Vernon Manor CDC, New Kensington CDC, The People's Emergency Center CDC, Project Home, and Rebuilding Together Philadelphia. These groups wanted to be here today to testify, but are very hard at work in our neighborhoods and could not attend. We support the passage of Bills Number 180739, 180740, and 180744. This package of bills will transfer nineteen million dollars in general funds to the Division of Planning and Development to develop new affordable homes, to repair or preserve existing affordable homes, and to support down payment and closing cost assistance. It will memorialize in ordinance an agreement between the Kenny Administration and City Council to transfer an additional fifty-three million dollars over the next four years, and will create a new sub-fund of the Housing Trust Fund to receive future payments. We applaud Mayor Kenny and City Council for reaching this agreement, and want to specifically acknowledge the leadership of Councilwoman Sanchez, Council President Clark, Councilman Squilla, in sparking the policy debates here in council that led to where we are today. As you know, PACDC and our members advocated strongly for language in the sub-fund ordinance to guarantee that at least half of the revenue go to support households under thirty percent area median income. While we are disappointed that that language was not included, we still support this package of bills. We also remain committed to advocating that as decisions are made about how the resources are spent, the lowest-income households are priority. We can use some portion of the funds for moderate-income households to help them preserve their homes or become homeowners. This work has value in all neighborhoods, but particularly in middle-income neighborhoods and rapidly gentrifying communities where moderate-income residents are getting priced out. But the quality of life of our lowest-income households is severely harmed by the lack of affordable housing. The needs of these individuals and families is most urgent, and they are the most desperate for help. This seventy-two million dollar agreement is a significant investment in the affordable housing needs of Philadelphians, but with more than a hundred thousand households searching for safe, quality, affordable homes, we can't stop here. We applaud council for pledging to find ways to boost that investment to a minimum of a hundred million dollars over the next five years, and we stand ready to work with you to make it happen. We also call on council and the Kenny Administration to agree to a mechanism to make these annual appropriations permanent and dedicated to the extent beyond FY twenty-four. Again, thank you, City Council Mayor Kenny, for this significant step in solving Philadelphia's growing affordable housing crisis.
Thank you for your testimony.
Atiba Quesi.
Morning. Good morning. My name is Atiba Quesi, and I'm here to speak about, I think, the vote that's going to happen today on the sheriff's, the sheriff's sales, the moratorium. And I can't speak as fast as these other people, so I'm gonna do the best that I can. I represent an organization called the West Philly Voting Block, and we have formed a coalition, Black Homes and Community Preservation Coalition. And we did all of this because we were made aware back in December and January that there was a list of owner-occupied tax delinquent homes in Philadelphia. Now, remind you, this is the fifty-year anniversary of the Fair Housing Act. There were twenty-eight thousand people on this list for sheriff's sale, for tax delinquent. Six thousand of these people were senior citizens. And I thought about my grandmother and the house I grew up in. My grandmother washed floors for a living. But I was the only house on the block that I could always bring my friends over when we had something to eat. I didn't have to go ask my grandmother nothing. She always made sure we had something that we could eat and we could share with our friends. And I'm thinking about these senior citizens, living in their homes for forty, fifty, and sixty years. Some of them second-generation homes. I come from West Philly Overbrook Section. I'm thinking to myself, how is it possible that after fifty years of the Fair Housing Act, we have six thousand senior citizens in this city that are gonna lose their homes because they owe less than ten thousand dollars on their home for taxes? And a lot of these taxes come from water bills. If you research this, and we asked the council people to research, I've been here before, understanding that there are a number of things that are going on in this city. And one of them is redlining. And I said back in March that a lot of these people that are losing their homes, especially to tax delinquency, but also to mortgage foreclosures, are being forced out of their homes through redlining, through the denial of loan modifications and other denials by the banks. August the fourth, Wells Fargo put in that they made a statement that they had mistakenly denied six hundred and twenty-nine people loan modifications, and they took four hundred of their homes. We're asking for a moratorium so that we can find out how many other people have lost their homes through a mistake that they claim that they made. How do you mistakenly take four hundred people homes? And how do they all, six hundred and twenty-nine of them, how are they all black people? Make me understand that. Did the computer pick that? I'm done.
Thank you.
Commenting on 180851.
This is a great concern. This concern goes back. A long time.
Just say your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Madeline G. Dunn, West Philadelphia. Eighty-five years west Philadelphia. I'm here today to just say to you that I've been supporting this battle for a long time, and I'm happy, I'm happy, because I spoke to Curtis today. Something's gonna happen here. Hopefully, that's gonna help bring some ending to some of this. This piece is big. This piece is big. And I always felt that we homeowners in West Philadelphia and across the city of Philadelphia were the backbone of this city. And I did until about the last ten, twelve years, when I look at people losing homes because they can't pay this, they can't pay that, and the wages aren't going up. But the people up here are getting more and more and more, and the people down here have less and less and less. And so, I'm saying we're looking for a way to do it. The moratorium, we want you to not get rid of one house until we find out exactly what the problems are. And as they get the problems solved, then we can start to work on it. We're asking every family, every family, please come to these meetings. Please come out and tell us how it's affecting you and your family. I saw a lady on the parkway with her butt, pulled her pants down, up in the air, because she probably didn't have any water in the house, and is on the street. It's a sad situation. Philadelphia looks bad over the world.
Thank you.
Morning. Thank you, Mr. President and members of this council. I do appreciate very much the opportunity to address this bill that is before council regarding the Alpha Center. Mr. President, you represent the district.
Reverend, just state your name for the record.
Sure, I'm sorry, thank you. Reverend William B. Moore, pastor of the Tenth Memorial Baptist Church. I have pastored the Tenth Memorial Baptist Church for the last forty-four years, and I've seen the changes in the community, and much of that you have been a part of, for which we are grateful. However, the district now is a tale of two cities. It is a city that is blooming with development, with persons coming into the community and forcing out people who live in the neighborhood because they cannot pay their taxes, they cannot pay their bills. And I know this council has grappled with this, but it is being replaced by people who make more money than the people who live in the community. And the taxes are to the point that they cannot pay them. And the people who move into the community do not become a part of the community. They come and they go to work, and they come back. We don't even know who is in the community. They do not go to our schools, they do not attend parent-teacher's meetings, they do not shop in our neighborhoods. As a matter of fact, the people that you see sitting on the steps and porches who were once there is no longer there. And they're being replaced by people who live on the rooftops of their houses and do not interact with the community. And yet, we have a university that has a lot to offer, and because of their failure or their inability to have an honest conversation with the community, it has exacerbated our problems. I am not against Temple University. I'm for Temple. But I am against their inability and their unwillingness to talk to the neighborhood about programs and buildings that the community does not ask for and does not want. And I would say that shiny buildings and land deals certainly do not take the place of honest conversation. And those conversations may be painful, but they do not, they do need to be had. And so I stand to oppose the Alpha Center because the community did not ask for it, and programs that we had no say in them. And so I stand to oppose it. And the finer thing is the arrogance of it. I have in my hand the card of a lady who has a contract to fit out a building that has not been approved by this council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for your testimony.
Jacqueline Wiggins. Commenting on 180100.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Jacqueline Wiggins. I am a member of the Stadium Stompers. I'm also a member of the No Stadium, No Deal Coalition. I'm a long-term resident of North Central. I'm also a committee person, Thirty-Second Ward, Eleventh Division, as Diamond Norris, Seventeenth and Twentieth. I am talking in terms of Bill 180100. This will be the fourth Thursday that I have spoken in opposition to the Alpha Center that Temple University wants to have built. At a community meeting on September twenty-fifth, the people of the area met, and I will read again their comments with respect to this Alpha Center. Why build this thing at Thirteenth Street? No more encroachment, Temple. Temple never fulfilled that shareet agreement. That building, in the end, will be for Temple University. This was a quiet neighborhood until the students came. Take that center to Broad and Diamond. Take that center back to campus where there is land. Councilman Clark, when you arrived, nothing changed. The people said the same thing, they voiced their opposition, and we continue to voice our opposition to Temple's encroachment east and west of Broad Street. Civil rights activist Walter Palmer gave the historical context of Temple's reach east and west of Broad. We have yet to have the type of conversation about the Alpha Center or the stadium in our neighborhood. We demand that this happens. We implore City Council to vote no on Bill 180100. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Bianca Parker, commenting on 180100.
Good afternoon. Hello, my name, hello, my name is Bianca Parker, and I'm a resident, and this is my fourth time speaking in opposition to Bill Number 180100, and I steadfastly oppose and want to say no and urge my council members to reject and do not allow the passage of Bill Number 180100, which will authorize the furtherance of predatory encroachment of Temple University's campus footprint, extend spin district, building of a research facility, and expansion of Temple police surveillance, and subject our African-American children to racial experiments. Camera surveillance is a common research method utilized in studies. Just as the Tuskegee experiments exploited African-Americans for scholarly and scientific gain, Temple University plans the Alpha Center for research of North Philadelphia preschool children. This plan also competes with existing area daycares. Temple failed four schools during five years of a school-district funding contract. Young African-American children would be subject to mental health treatment and study. As staff ungraded, Temple University students would be treatment providers at the Psychology Clinic. Patients of Temple University's Psychology Clinic would be subject to research studies. Temple must abandon plans for Alpha Center to extend, to expand campus. Temple must abandon plans to subject African-American children and African-American adults to research studies, and Temple must abandon plans for dental clinic that already exists. I've said it once, and I'll say it again and again and again, I'm going to voice opposition to this travesty, and I'm going to speak up and out against Temple. And I urge council members to vote no to early learning, research, and mental health labeling of African-American preschool-aged children in North Philadelphia, and urge council members to say no to Bill Number 180100. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Paula Peebles, commenting on 180100.
Good morning. My name is Paula Peebles. I am speaking in opposition to Bill 180100. And as my colleagues have indicated earlier, and I want all council people to stop looking at their phones, that as my colleagues have said before, we've been here every week to speak in opposition to 180100. And as City Councilman to the Fifth District, Darrell Clark, you are the source of the misery of black people in North Philadelphia. And you know I don't care if you take it personal, I don't care, because the fact is, you know why we concluded that? Because we have sent you a letter in the spring to come and meet with us. You have refused to come and meet with us. Everyone else you'll meet with. When the Asian community said they did not want a baseball field in their community, you all didn't put the baseball field there. I heard Councilwoman at-large, Blondell Reynolds Brown, just said, this is a minority-majority city. However, the way you council people carry out laws and bills in this body, you carry it out as if we're minority-minority. A few more points. We are in opposition to Alpha. I'm not going over about Alpha Center. It has already been indicated. We hear every time. You keep holding the bill, Darrell, thinking that we're not gonna show up. We're gonna show up every week. You try to be slick with the bill, and council people, look at the bill, 180100, where they've combined two. One to say to allow Temple to expand their master plan over to Thirteenth and Susquehanna where they will take the Elverson School, as if it's not enough that they've taken John Wanamaker High School, I mean, John Wanamaker Middle School and William Penn High School. Now they're looking to take another school at Thirteenth and Susquehanna, two allow for studification. Two, allow for gentrification. These people that do not live in our community, they come every nine or 10 months for education, then they disappear. You heard Reverend Bill Moore, the convenor of No Stadium, No Deal, just explain to you how they sit up on their rooftops and look over at the indigenous people like myself that reside in North Philadelphia. It's unfair what you do, Darrell. You're not being slick because we see what you're doing. The Alpha Center of City Council people is combined in that bill where it says to rezone the parcel for development of the Alpha Center. You know why they want y'all to do that? So that we won't show up to zoning to oppose it. So he tried to covertly put both of the orders, both of the bills together in one. But we're aware of that. That's why you're the source of the misery of black people in North Philadelphia, Darrell. And then, okay, I'm all right, I'm getting ready to close up. Galate Gray Cecil B. Moore, something that he coined, which you have been honored by our votes, Councilman Clark, and John Street before you. You know one thing he often said? You're my color, but you're not my kind.
Thank you for your testimony.
Agbana Haggins, commenting on 170408.
Good morning. Great morning to you. How you doing, everyone? My name is Obona Haggins. I'm an educator, publisher, and I'm here to, I'm for Bill 170408, Resolution Calling on and urging the school district of Philadelphia to permanently prohibit the suspension of elementary-age students from the first through the fifth grade. Obviously, I oppose that. But one of the things that I absolutely think needs to happen, particularly because the majority of our council members are Afro-American, the inclusion of Afro-American studies in our school district of Philadelphia. The primary, the primary amount, the students that attend our public schools are primarily Afro-American. We should not be studying about Christopher Columbus discovering America, not in 2018. Maybe 10 years ago, maybe 15 years ago, we could celebrate, what's his name? Christopher Columbus. But we know now that he was lost. We know what he meant to Africans, Africans and Afro-Americans. So we have to eliminate lifting Christopher Columbus up, as well as keeping our children in school and not letting them be suspended below the fifth grade. And furthermore, we have to also make sure that our students can read on grade level. We cannot be insisting that they stay in school, but they're staying in school and they can't read on grade level. We know what the statistics are. Whatever has to be done. And I have some ideas, and there's other people in the city that have ideas on making sure that our students can read, because just to push them out is not good. And I'm going to give you one example. When I was teaching at Dobbins, there was a student that had a 63 average in the senior year. And all the teachers, the administration asked me, "Well, why don't you just push him on out?" And the reason that I didn't push him out is because he was absent 28 days out of that school year. He could have made up his own three, three points to graduate. I saw him about eight years, nine years later, and he thanked me for failing him because he was able to learn the things that he wasn't able to learn or wouldn't be able to learn if I just pushed him on through. So that's my statement for the day. And in the, in the, in the, in the spirit of Benjamin Lay, we will be speaking about the injustice that's going on in Philadelphia as a result of the city council members not doing what should be done to make sure that our children are educated, the truth, they're taught the truth, not just thrown in school and just thrown lies.
Thank you for your testimony.
Tiffany Green, commenting on 170678 AAA and 180851.
Good afternoon. All right, I want, I'm asking you to give out some, can you give out these pictures for me? Okay, I want to give them out. Okay, can you give them out for me? Okay. I don't want to start until you give them out. I mean, hold you up, but I think you all should take a look at these pictures before I speak. It's important. I'd like for Council President Clark to get a copy and maybe the rest can share this picture. Okay, and to my brothers and sisters over here who want affordable housing, I support you, but this bill right here, this mixed housing bill.
Just state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tiffany Green.
Yeah.
All right, did they give out the pictures yet? I want you all to see these pictures, okay? They're very important. Okay? This right here, this mixed housing bill that you want to put forth is giving out height bonuses, okay? Now, the height bonuses are detrimental to rowhouse homeowners, okay? And the reason why I want you to see this picture, because this is a two-story block with new development going up to 50 feet. The thing about it is that this is an RM1. RM1 intertwines with a lot of RSA5s throughout the city of Philadelphia in different neighborhoods. And so, this bill needs to be done by district and not citywide. First of all, you're giving the developer, the developer is only going to, he's going to give you money for a housing trust fund. What you need is mandatory inclusionary zoning, mandatory affordable housing zoning, not no, not no housing bonus, not no height bonus, because at this particular point, and then you're bamboozling the people because you're saying, "Oh, we're going to get 73 million over five years." Well, let's do the math. 73 million, if it costs $100,000 for affordable, because the developers say it costs about $150 for new construction, if you divide the $100,000 into 73 million, you only get 730 units, okay, over five years of affordable housing. Well, let's look at CDR. We went to CDR on Tuesday. You had seven projects totaling 500 units, majority market rate. We have a developer right now on Chocolate Factory. He wants to put 286 units. He says he only does market rate units. You know, you're a little friendly developer I'm talking about, okay? He only does, he only does market rate. So if he only does market rate, that means he's willing to do a little, give a little money to the trust fund. But in order for you to have inclusionary, you must have mandatory inclusionary zoning. When the developer comes to LNI, he needs to know that he should do 60/40. 80/20 is a not balanced reinvestment. You leave us at a disadvantage. It needs to be 60/40 or maybe 65/35. But you can't sit up here because when you have this height, you have people sitting on their step looking, "Genification, I'm going to be pushed out." Oh, when the, when the kids are playing in the street, "Genification, I'm going to be pushed out." And now, you're saying in this height bill, you're willing to let somebody go up to 60 feet? 60 feet? No, this bill does not need to be passed because only 726 units is not going to help us over five years when you have developers building a thousand, we have Bill Blasting want to build a thousand units at Broad and Washington Avenue. A thousand market rate units, and this is 726 of affordable housing, is not going to be passed.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Orica Hurst, commenting on 180851.
Good evening, good afternoon, good morning, whatever time zone you're in. My name is Orica Hurst and I'm a resident of Philadelphia. I graduated from John Bartram High School and I also graduated from Temple University in 2016. Right now, I'm a community organizer for an organization called One Pennsylvania, and I'm here to support, I'm here to support that there needs to be mandatory funding for the housing trust bill, permanent funding for it, ongoing. But I'm here alone to support the bill for the resolution for the moratorium that Councilman Curtis Jones introduced last Thursday. Now, I'm here with an article that states how redlining segregated Philadelphia. And I'm here to urge council members, everyone, every last council member here and everyone that's not here, please speak to them about the article in NextCity.org, talking about how redlining segregated Philadelphia. We need this moratorium. My grandparents own a home on Whippy Avenue and also on Spruce Street. One is on dialysis and the other one suffered from a stroke not too long ago. I'm here today as a concerned citizen and as a community organizer. I speak to hundreds of community, community members every week about them being pushed out of their homes and having been redlined 50 years ago. They are taking out reverse mortgages. They do not feel comfortable going to banks and asking for loans. They're being denied constantly for equity loans to fix up their homes, to compete with the gentrification that Sisters Tiffany Green just spoke about. If city council is here and the majority of them are African-American, they need to support the moratorium that needs to do an internal investigation into the redlining practices done by mortgages, banks, also by our lending, lending, lending companies in the city of Philadelphia. As a 27-year-old stu, as a 27-year-old college graduate, I'm a renter and I do not know when I will be able to purchase a home because of these redlining practices ongoing, even though I have a credit score above 700, I'm in fear even going to a bank because I know as a black woman, I will be given a higher interest rate. I have four nieces and I have two nephews. I do not want their future to be pushed out into the counties of Montgomery County, Delaware County, into northeast Philadelphia where we're being pushed out to, because I grew up in southwest Philadelphia and nothing is being done about southwest Philadelphia for affordable homes. Just like Sister Tiffany Green stated here today, that, that bill for the housing trust fund, it needs to be amended because it's not going to be enough affordable homes to compete with the thousands of units that are coming into Philadelphia. If you do your research, 30, over 30,000 units are going to be needed to demand, the housing demand in Philadelphia, over 30,000 units, and they're going to be on market value. If we have a city that is categorized as working poor, working poor, there are half a million people that are working two or three jobs that cannot afford to pay rent. So with that being said, if the city council that is predominantly Afro-American, I know you guys do not live in Philadelphia County, but if you care about their constituents, you will support this moratorium and you will support the ongoing research and you will support more funding for affordable homes because right now, fixed income people are not going to make more income. And if I'm, if I'm already working and I'm making more, if I'm making a little bit of salary, in 10 years when I want to purchase a home, I will be unable to because as a black woman, I know that I'm being discriminated against.
Thomas Earl, commenting on 180739, 180744, and 180740.
Good morning, Council President and members of City Council. My name's Thomas Earl. I'm the Executive Director of Liberty Resources, the Center for Independent Living in Philadelphia. We're a member of the Coalition for Affordable Communities, Philadelphia Coalition for Affordable Communities, and I'm here to testify to support the much-needed infusion of over $70 million of expired tax abatement revenue into the housing trust fund or the concept of a housing trust fund. But we are very against the creation of a sub-fund, which was deliberately created to be exempt from the main requirements of the existing housing trust fund that Councilwoman Blackwell and Blondell Reynolds Brown passed in 2005 that required at least half the money go to people or households earning 30% of the area median income or below. That is not a compromise. We hear that this bill or this series of bill is a result of a careful compromise. It's not a compromise when this legislative body does not include people who are impacted by these bills at the table. These meetings took place behind closed doors, deals are struck, special interests are stroked, like the fair trades, the electrical union, private for-profit developers, and the vast majority of city residents who can't afford to live in this city are ignored. Okay? So you can ignore us, but we are not going to ignore you. And we will be, we will hold this legislative body accountable. There will be an election in the May. People with disabilities, seniors, working poor families, and other interested parties are going to vote. So we ask that you vote no on the sub-fund, yes on the new money, and do your jobs and open your hearts and listen to your voters.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you, Clerk. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on second and final reading passage on today's calendar. Clerk, would you please read the title of our first resolution?
Resolution Number 180848, entitled, "A Resolution Urging the Federal Government to Strengthen Standards Used to Analyze Dust Lead Hazards and Lead Exposure to Children," introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds. So it has been moved and properly second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution is adopted. Clerk, would you please read the amendment to Resolution Number 180851?
Resolution Number 180851, entitled, "A Resolution Calling on Sheriff Joel Williams and the First Judicial District of Pennsylvania to Impose a Moratorium on Residential Property Foreclosure Sales Until City Council Has Had the Opportunity to Hold Public Hearings Regarding Recently obtained Data Which Suggests Troubling Trends in Already Struggling Areas of the City," introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to amend, offer amendment to Resolution 180851. A copy of that amendment, which is only a technical amendment, be moved and adopted.
It has been moved and properly second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. The amendment to Bill, to Resolution Number 180851 has been adopted and will be heard on final passage next week. Okay, the chair will now recognize Councilman Jones with the resolution on 180851 as amended.
Mr. Chair, may I speak to this amendment before we, we vote? Yes?
Yes.
I can't see that far sometimes. But thank you. You got the light shining. First of all, let me thank all of those who took the time out to testify about this bill and this resolution. For a lot of you, you could have done anything, been anywhere, but you took the time to come down and speak to this. And I want to thank also Ms. Dunn and Ms. Jettie Newkirk, who are our seniors who took the time to come down and talk. I want to recognize all those in the voting block who, and sometimes we sit in these chairs and we, we have good intentions, but often, we don't have good information. We lose touch with what is going on out there. And I want to say that we were on the 1500 block of Allison Street. We're doing a neighborhood tour and we were looking at different aspects of the community and dealing with gentrification, dealing with relocation of seniors, people who retire into poverty, people who divorce into poverty, people who are struggling, check to check to make ends meet. And we noticed that there was indentations in the street and that those indentations were because the laterals were collapsing. And a lot of times, gentrification and lateral collapsing are synonymous with homelessness. Because when the water department came out, they said they had 15 days to fix that lateral and the bill was going to be $6,400. And for some people, that is not a big thing. They write a check, they grab a piece of plastic and they make the payment. For other people, that is one half of a year's salary. And they have to choose between water, because it's going to be cut off, and relocation. And that relocation leads to abandonment of house. That abandonment of house usually leads to tax delinquency, which leads That abandonment of house usually leads to tax delinquency, which leads to someone at a sheriff's sale taking advantage of the poverty within our community. So these things are linked together. And if we don't start to address them, we're going to walk down those same streets and not recognize our neighbors. So this moratorium is not designed to protect people in the suburbs who have investment properties, who are taking advantage of folk. I want my colleagues to know that. It's not about people who are owning lots and hoping for speculation to reap large profits from that investment. It is for home-occupied individuals not to become homeless. Now, I always, always tell my, my, my community, there are two types of people often. There are those people, like some of my colleagues around my component, that want to save every soul. And I love them. And then there's some of my colleagues that just want to save the taxpayers money. And I love them too. But on these kinds of compromises, both people and both sides can win. Because when you make somebody homeless for $6,400, you wind up spending $200 a day in a homeless shelter. When you do the math, it, it's cheaper to keep her in that house. So we want to use our common sense to push the pause button as Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds always talks about, and bring the stakeholders, banking, the revenue department, the community, in a room and work this thing out. We're not talking about forever. We are talking about pause, pushing the pause button. So I move for the adoption of the moratorium resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Motion of four for resolution to be adopted. Do I hear second? It has been moved and properly second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Resolution is adopted.
Oh, first bill. So we're just starting clean right at the top.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Decker. Just like to be recorded as voting aye on all resolutions. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 1-80295 AAA.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by amending the one-year rule, modifying certain public notice requirements, and making related changes.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson is voting aye. Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilwoman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gornana Sanchez is voting aye. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Taubinberger.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes of seventeen and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 1-80498 AAA.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning to provide for the procedures for the administrative review process.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. Question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson is voting aye. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neal. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gornana Sanchez is voting aye. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes of seventeen and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 1-700678 AAA.
An ordinance amending Title 7 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Housing Code by adding a new chapter 7, 200, entitled Mixed Income Housing Program to provide for affordable housing standards, amending section 14, 702 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Mixed Income Housing to make related changes, amending chapters 14, 600, and 14, 700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled respectively Use Regulations and Development Standards to amend certain zoning standards relating to residential development.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. Question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson is voting aye. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neal. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gornana Sanchez is voting aye. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes of seventeen and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 1-80504.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by revising section 14, 303, sub-paragraph 11A, entitled Registered Community Organizations by providing funding for limited insurance coverage for registered community organizations.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson is voting aye. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neal. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gornana Sanchez is voting aye. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes of seventeen and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 1-80739.
An ordinance amending chapter 21, 1600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Housing Trust Fund to authorize the establishment of separate sub-funds to receive respectively revenues attributable to recording fees and revenues from sources other than recording fees, to provide for and authorize the manner in which such revenues may be appropriated and spent, and to designate the agency within city government responsible for administering the housing trust fund.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson is voting aye. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neal. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gornana Sanchez is voting aye. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes of sixteen and ayes of one. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 1-80744.
An ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2019 from the Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance Provision for Other Grants, to the General Fund, the Director of Finance, and the Housing Trust Fund, the Department of Planning and Development.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson is voting aye. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neal. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gornana Sanchez is voting aye. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes of seventeen and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 1-80744.
An ordinance providing for recurring funding to support equitable neighborhood development by preserving middle neighborhoods, constructing affordable housing units available for sale or rent, providing assistance to Philadelphians who desire to become homeowners, and directing councils to appropriate revenues for said purposes to the Department of Planning and Development, Division of Housing and Community Development.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson is voting aye. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neal. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gornana Sanchez is voting aye. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes of seventeen and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, any additional resolutions?
A resolution hereby recognizing October 9th as Charles W. Bowser Day in Philadelphia in recognition of his lifelong dedication to public service and his significant contributions to the African-American community in Philadelphia. Introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes. It's moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing Sunday, October 14, 2018, as General Kazimir Pulaski Day in the city of Philadelphia. Introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Move for the adoption of resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing the 15th anniversary of World Radio and celebrating the station's role as the voice of the African-American community. Introduced by Councilman Jones on behalf of Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson. I'm sorry, Jones. Sorry.
On behalf of Councilman Johnson, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold hearings regarding diversity and inclusion in procurement and capital expenditures by the Philadelphia School District. Introduced by Councilman Jones on behalf of Councilman Johnson.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Again, on behalf of my colleague, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and honoring Tracy's Beautiful Inside and Out, a nonprofit breast cancer support organization whose mission is to help survivors maintain a level of normalcy. Introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Richard Vig, recipient of the 2018 Icon Award presented by the Germination Project for his hard work and dedication to the city of Philadelphia. Introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. Move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Boeing and Leonardo helicopters on the announcement of the winning selection of their bid to replace the United States Air Force Fleet of UH-1N Huey helicopters to be proudly made in Philadelphia. Introduced by Councilman O'Neal.
Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Streets and Services to hold hearings to ascertain whether current and planned road repair efforts will address unsatisfactory road conditions. Introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Any speeches on behalf of the minority? Speeches on behalf of the majority? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of my mother's favorite expressions was, "Nothing good or bad lasts forever." I constantly remind my team that we are what we repeatedly do. Excellence, therefore, is not an act, but a habit. When we as council members go out to intentionally recruit and or acquire competent, committed, devoted staff, we want young professionals who understand that mediocrity is a sin. Members of my team have moved on and up into positions of leadership and responsibility, making a difference all across Philadelphia. Some have gone on to higher ed like Joe Medid LaSalle, corporate Philadelphia like Jason Lewis at Mercy Ameritas, law firms like Haji Malumium, and the school district of Philadelphia like Haneeah Shark Brown. I remind all of my staff who are offered an opportunity to seize it, do it excellently, and represent. This morning, I want to salute and share with my colleagues and his peers that we have another staffer who will be joining the alumni club of hashtag Team Councilwoman BRB. With him entering his last year of law school, I did know this day was coming. I did not know it would come so soon. This young man officially joined my team in January 2015 where he showed up asking simply to be a volunteer. Upon joining the team, he hit the ground running. He became quickly a team player, learning what teamship, team membership looks like. He's intelligent, always eager, and ambitious. He clearly embraced the clear purpose of our office and the principal values we share and has been exceedingly lawyer, loyal, serving with distinction. Because he is a young professional with the perfect blend of qualities required for achievement, he was made an offer he couldn't refuse, even while he is still in law school, to join a law firm. I think that's awesome. So with that, I say with a happy and sad heart, Stephen Chintaman will be leaving us. I'm going to miss your positive energy. I'm going to miss your bright spirit. I'm going to miss what my mother would call stick-tuitiveness in your work habits because I really appreciate it, most of all, your active engagement and the research on the issue that we care about, which is deepening and strengthening MBE/WVE participation in this town. He's responsible for the bill I introduced today. What is my charge to you? That you continue practice being a rubber band. Continue to stretch. We are engineered to embrace challenges. Thank you for learning the rubber band principle. Given your personality, your work ethic, your understanding of what it takes to be a team player, Catherine Gilmore and I are exceedingly proud of you and your growth. In closing, I want to remind you, Stephen, that you have the right stuff. You understand clearly that as an African-American young professional in this town, excellence is not a sometime thing. Excellence is an all-time thing. Thank you for your excellent footprint and thumbprint and your contribution in this office. As you complete your last year of law school while working at a law firm to become a promising attorney, I want to thank you for everything. Finally, like Joe Medid LaSalle and David Ford at University of the Sciences, and Jason Lewis with one of the second-largest marketing firm in town, and Kellen White at the Comptroller's Office, and Haji Malumium doing his law practice, and Candice Woods at Boys Latin School, and Haneeah- Haneeah Sharp Brown at the School District, you two will be gone without the E. You got that? Welcome to the Alumni Club of hashtag Team Councilwoman BRB. You are most deserving of a hearty congratulations. You are a rising star. We'll be saluting and celebrating Stephen's new venture tomorrow. For those of us who believe in celebrations that we do in my office, join us 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Fridays on the Parkway. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President, and thank God for good teams. So congratulations and Godspeed in your new endeavors. Which brings me to my team, all right, who has helped, you know, to further advance manufacturing, as we had stated in the presentation today. But I wanted to wait until the end to really talk about the Career Expo. I have flyers that are on the table on your way out. Please grab them circulating to your office, to the community groups, to your neighbors, to your families and friends. There is, without a doubt, a need for manufacturing employees in the city of Philadelphia. Like I said, over 1,000 people that could be hired immediately, all right, for career opportunities. I mean, immediately. We had just heard from somebody who celebrated 120 years, who chose to stay here in the city of Philadelphia. I loved it that it happened to be in my district, all right, but we're going to have over 50 employers at this Career Expo who are looking for. I had a Career Expo earlier this year where my office offers free, for folks in my district, free resume building, all right, for those who had, you know, don't know how to build a resume, we can help, we help them with resumes. And in that Career Expo, the two people who took advantage of having a resume working with my office were hired, all right. They were now serving and going to work and serving in a career in advanced manufacturing. So we have that. I mean, we are grown. We have another new acquisition that, you know, come from another part of the city that is, the Honored Foods was bought out by Burrus Logistics, all right. They employed 109 people, all right. They're going to continue to honor, all right, those that are currently employed and gain 70 more. 70 more people, that's not included in this, over 1,000 people in the manufacturing industry. And that is all because, you know, we have been working together. And, Council President, you've been around a long time, and I have witnessed what I have witnessed over the years, but I have never seen a more collaborative effort in leveraging the departments and using the resources and the attraction for business and trying to employ people, Philadelphians, all right, first in the city here in which we live and serve. So we do have an office of manufacturing led by Al Toro and Jonathan, who does the CTE and pipeline creation, making sure that our city kids and our public schools also have the first choice and opportunity to grow in this industry as we advance our technologies. City is going to be a part of that, so I will be circulating that, and I am proud of all the city agencies and every council person who continues to support, all right, the growth of the CTE and advanced manufacturing industry. So good times and good fortune is ahead of us as we employ and hire Philadelphians to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Certainly, I want to thank my colleagues, because we are fighting hard. John Christmas can attest to what we fight for, for CTE programs and others, penicillin and others. We thank you for that, and we also want to congratulate a young man who's moving upward and onward. I rise today to talk about an issue that I understand the administration is working on, and that is our libraries. We received a call yesterday that regional libraries, they want to close them on Mondays, and that the other libraries are going to lose people who work there because of budget restraints. And we think that, we know there's, we know there's a need, but we don't think cutting libraries and cutting regional libraries is a way to go to make it happen. So if you haven't been contacted, I went to a meeting today, this morning, at Walnut West Library, and I received a flyer. So if you haven't received one, you will, because all the friends of the Free Libraries are contacting all of us to ask us to fight this issue so that libraries aren't cut. We've talked to the administration. They said they're looking at that, and so we are hoping that we can resolve this without a big, big, big to-do, because we can't afford... Children have, our youngsters have so many issues, but not being able to use their libraries should not be one of them. The second thing I'd like to mention, we had a resolution passed today. Thank you all for supporting it. Talking on Tuesday, October 9th, at 2:00 p.m. in the caucus room, we will, led by Michael Cord, Attorney Michael Cord, we'll have a ceremony for Charles Bowser for his birthday, and some members of his family and other friends will be there. So we invite anyone who's free on Tuesday, the 9th, at 2:00 p.m., to join us in the caucus room to honor the late and great Charles Bowser. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That concludes the speeches on behalf of the minority and majority, and with that, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, October 11th, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly second that council stand adjourned until Thursday, October 11, 2018, 10:00 a.m. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, thank you all very much.